Back in session.
All right, Commissioners. So before we left lunch, the clerk indicated to me, and I could verify with Lori that she had no items, no action items, no information items. So then we go, you ready to hear from Alan? Go to my report. We'll start on page nine, item 29. County staff and St. George Island Civic Club has partnered on an application for the Florida Department of Transportation Beautification Grant. The grant will improve the landscape from the southern end of Bryant-Patten Bridge to West Bay Shore Drive on State Road 300 located on St. George Island. The grant, ranked number one statewide, I believe, Mark isn't here to verify, was approved and sent to the county. The grant packet includes the Landscape Instruction and Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement from FDOT for the chairman's signature. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on FDOT's Beautification Grant Memorandum of Agreement.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Masse, second by Commissioner Lockley. In discussion before we vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, minutes.
Long time coming. Worked hard on that. Item 30. At your last meeting, the board asked that I present a scenario that would involve the county's building inspector as part of the ship program inspections. After discussing this matter with Ms. Lori Switzer Mills, your ship administrator, and Mrs. Steve Patterson, your county inspector, I recommend that when the ship project contractor submits his request for his final draw, the ship inspector or administrator contact Mr. Patterson for the final project inspection approval. The contractor will not receive his final payout until the final inspection is approved by Mr. Patterson. Board action to approve this change if this is what the board, the involvement that the board wanted from the county staff.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Masse. Discussion?
My pleasure.
I have something I want to clarify, Michael, just to make sure. Would these, would these have anything to do with quality of work?
Yes.
Or just the actual, what's been done?
Well, what I'm, what I'm, what I meant by this, I'll say, and I had it then, I took it out, because I rewarded it, is that he's approving both code and workmanship.
Okay.
So we can forget that on the record.
Thank you.
And will he be doing the whole thing or just part of it?
Just the end, just the final inspection. Yes, sir. So, and if there's a question or any issues, he will turn to the ship inspector and say, "What did you write up? What did you expect? Because I'm not comfortable with what I'm seeing here." And we'll go from there. But until he approves it, there will be no final payout.
Does the ship people pay for county permitting just like regular people do?
They do not, sir. A long time ago, we had passed a procedure to allow ship, all ship permits to, they would have to come and pull a permit, but there's no charge for it. But anytime you want to change that, you let me know, and I'll put that in my report, too.
Should ship reimburse our county inspector for services rendered?
We, we could. Since he was only doing the final inspection, I didn't look for reimbursement, because I talked to Steve and see, he said, you know, he said, "Look, Michael, if it's just a final inspection, I'm not looking for more money," you know. If it becomes a situation where he's in great demand and it affects what he's doing here, yeah, I'll come back to the board and say, "Hey, we didn't realize it would demand this much of his time to deal with the ship for inspections."
Mr. Chair. I, I think what the consensus was is that we'd rather that money be spent on trying to rehabilitate homes for people rather than having to pay permit fees in business, it wasn't civic, I mean, our county function. And we kind of waived those permit fees.
I see.
Still got to go pull it and all that, but we also wanted the money to go towards helping these people rebuild their homes and all, so the money was better spent on the home than paying the permit fee.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Parrish is right, because the money to pay for inspections does not come out of admin. It comes out of the program funds. So, yes, he's exactly right.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries on.
So last Friday, the board made a special session to discuss and take action on a request from USDA to continue the obligation of a $10 million loan for the hospital improvement project. By unanimous, unanimous motion, the board authorized me to engage Mr. Joe Bynum, the project architect, to assist with creating the proposal to proceed that will be submitted to USDA for the continued obligation of the loan. I spoke to Mr. Bynum after the meeting on Friday, and he agreed to immediately start working on this proposal and then contact USDA first thing this morning to discuss any additional information that will be required. Mr. Bynum stated that if USDA requires information that is already created and is accessible, there'll be no charge to the county for his time. If USDA is requiring additional information, he will send me an estimated proposal for approval before proceeding. And I, I've received requests from both Mr. Bynum and Mrs. Forbes at USDA to give him a call as soon as the meeting is over. It looks like they have been in contact with each other, but I have nothing else to report right now until I talk to both of them.
Michael, before we proceed, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
About this, I don't know if this is an issue or not, but I've had several people ask me. So the monies we have, we're talking about here, trying to retain that possibility for the loan.
Hmm.
There's still two proposals at hand. One's building a new facility, and one is, well, both are building a new facility. One is a hospital, one's, what is it?
Freestanding.
Freestanding.
Are these funds going to, in any way, be hindered by either one of these proposals?
I could ask.
Okay. I would like to know that, just to make sure.
You want to make a motion?
You will?
I make a motion, we thought, building a hospital.
Oh, and you know, you want to make sure that if USDA asks what they require from a management contract, if we, if we should enter into a management contract, what interest does USDA have in that contract?
Okay. Okay, so now we're building on this here, so, okay.
One, you're right, and sir, I'm going to, Commissioner Lockley made a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion to ask for lack of a second. Carry on, sir.
Okay, so two things I'm being requested to ask USDA is, one, can the money be used for both proposals? I'm summarizing here. And if the management agreement affects the funding in any way, is that what you're asking, Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Okay. Um, if I may, before we move on, a couple of things I want to clear. One, this morning, I, there was someone to the podium that stated that Commissioner Masse said that if Sacred Heart came here, that the clinics would close. I'm going to check the record when I have a chance, listen to the audio. I'm not quite sure that's what he said. We talked about two different things that related to the Carabelle Clinic. One was if the inter-locals were challenged and broken, or they pulled out, that then the Carabelle Clinic would close. I think at another time, he said that while Roger Hall was here, they asked about if he would be reducing the days or the hours of operation at the clinic in Carabelle, and Roger said they will open for so many days, and based on clientele, they would decide if they're going to extend the hours or the days or not. That's my recollection as to the discussion we had on Friday. If I'm wrong, I'm sure the record will tell me that I'm wrong, but I just want to clarify that. And I'll say one more thing, and I probably shouldn't, but I will anyway, because my head is hard that way. So if we were having the discussion we had on Friday today, I want the board to be aware of something. Based on how many public comments we had on Friday, it would have been at least an hour past now before we would have gotten to the discussion that we had on Friday in that event. And many people criticized the board, myself, the county, whatever, however you all look at it, for having that meeting. But we do the best with what we know, and when we know better, we do better, Commissioners. That's my attitude. That's why I deal with it. So it's easy to sit there and criticize the county for what we do. Imagine the criticism we'd receive today if they had, same people spoke this morning at 9:00, and an hour from now, 2:15, is when we were finally discussing it. It'd have been a total disconnect. I'll leave it there.
That's true.
Item 32. On February 5th, based on a request from Mr. Jim Coleman, Alliance CEO, the board heard from Mr. Mark O'Brien, CEO TMH, and Mr. Coleman regarding their proposal to partner with Franklin County for healthcare. Commissioner Bolt, after that meeting, Commissioner Bolt suggested that I contact Mr. Roger Hall, Sacred Heart Ascension Regional President, to inquire if he had any changes to Sacred Heart's healthcare proposal, and if he would like another opportunity to appear before the board to discuss the changes to the proposal. The earliest Mr. Hall is available to meet with the board is Thursday, March 5th, 2020. Problem is, there is county court in this meeting room on that day, so the meeting will have to be held at Fort Coombs Armory. I haven't checked the schedule for the upstairs courtroom. I think there's court there, too. Would the board prefer I get a date later in March when this room is available? Or should I just go ahead and schedule the March 5th meeting in the armory?
You schedule, we got two places you can schedule. Armory or either that hall out there, way there.
Oh, the Chapin?
You mean Chapin Theater?
Yeah, the auditorium.
Yeah.
Where was the acoustics better?
Well...
You have a little bit, I don't know.
Well, let, let me, let me say this, beyond the acoustics, let me just be honest with you guys. The problem is, you have to take the recording software that we have and engineer it to record the meeting properly, you know, and we have to set up for minutes. So logistics, it gets a little touchy, but we'll do what the board, the will of the board.
This is a very sensitive item. We need to have good records.
My thing is, I don't want the meeting to be somewhere else, and people complain that we switched, we switched the meeting somewhere, and they didn't have a fair chance to say what they want to say. Everybody's accustomed to having this meeting.
Here.
Yeah.
In this room.
And, you know, and I'm sure I could work out another day with Mr. Hall, Mr. Roger Hall, but I told him I would bring it to the board and see if his earliest date available is what you want to do, or you prefer to wait till him and I could work out another date when this room is available.
I think we ought to stay in this room in continuity again.
He's amenable to both. He'll do whatever the board wants.
As long as they don't burn up a whole lot of time.
So you want to try to move to a different day, or what's the pleasure of the board?
I see maybe the next, the following week. I don't, I don't think I see a problem with the following week, to be honest with you guys. If you guys don't mind waiting a week.
Can you do it by motion, or can you just do it by direction?
Just direction. You tell me if you're good with me, try to schedule something with the first date that he's available and this room is available. This is what the direction I'm looking for. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Well, good? All right. Item 33. Mr. Patrick Kelly of Harriers of St. George Island would like the board to consider changing the county's hours of sale of alcoholic beverage, and I have to say this because it's Florida statute, please holding a license under beverage law of the state of Florida, from midnight to 1:00 a.m. year round. Currently, the county allows the sale of alcohol until 1:00 a.m. from May 30th, September 5th, I'm sorry, from May 30th to September 5th, which is considered a peak tourist season, and specific holidays are stated in ordinance 216-05, which was approved at your July 5th, 2016, regular meeting. Mr. Kelly states in his request, and I quote, "Tourist traffic has increased during the fall and winter months. I think this time change will have a positive effect on economy, especially during the holiday season." End quote. This act will require ordinance, therefore Attorney Shuler would need direction. The sheriff is aware of this proposed change. It'd have to be done by ordinance again, right, sir, just like you did the 2016 one?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought.
And just to clarify, this would also be all of unincorporated Franklin County, correct?
I believe that's the way the ordinance was written originally.
I believe it is.
Yep.
Okay.
Did the sheriff have any opinion about this other than being aware?
Well, he's fine. He said he...
He's okay?
He said to me, "If, if, if by chance it takes additional staff to cover that one extra hour for the period of time, he'll let you know." I think he kind of said that in a chuckle. At least, I hope he did, so, yeah.
He did.
I know.
No, he, he does know about it. Talked to him before we even brought it forward, and acted like he was okay with it. Pleasure to the board.
And all you're doing, you're not approving it. All you're doing here is directing Attorney Shuler to start the process for the public hearing for the ordinance. That's all you're doing today. It has to be approved, well, I was going to say like this morning, it has to be approved by...
The board has to authorize a public hearing.
Yeah. That's all, that's all you're doing right now.
That what you need, public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
So move.
Second.
Yeah.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lockley, a second by Commissioner Masse. Any more discussion before we vote?
Yeah, that's all we organized, just a...
That's a public hearing.
That's right.
We got to give them public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's your minutes.
Thank you very much. Item 34. Opportunity Florida has requested that the board renew our rural area of opportunity designation. This redesignation must be renewed every five years, and the last renewal was in 2015. Commissioners, I apologize. As I told you, I did not attach the draft version. Mark looked it over. He made some notations. I fixed it, but I did not have a chance to attach it. But it's a standard. Mark's good with it. He says it's basically the same one from last year, except you add 2015, and you just renew it five more years.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion?
We still in good grace with it now?
Oh, yeah. We just, we need to redo it. Yes, sir. They're just being proactive with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Do it have one more question?
Motion's in.
Yes, sir.
Did it have a deadline for us to renew?
Why didn't she tell me April? They said the state wants everyone's resolutions by April 1st. So that's why she brought it to me early, in case you guys would have any issues. All right, so my other three items are informational items, and so as I look at Royce with his head down. Inform the board that the Florida Department of Transportation project to replace the Graham Creek Bridge on State Road 65 will begin during the first or second week in March 2020. The low-level bridge, including piles and slopes, piles and slope protection, will be replaced along with roadway approach reconstruction using asphalt pavement, shoulder gutter, and guard rail. There'll be a temporary bridge and onsite diversion utilized to maintain traffic while the existing bridge is replaced. That's not us. That's a direct FDOT project they're working on. The county received notice from Ms. Portia Sapp, she's Director of Division of Aquaculture, that the Board of Trustees approved the establishment of the Four Mile Aquaculture Use Zone. Over the last several months, there have been numerous meetings and emails regarding this A U Z, especially the required preference for anyone interested in a lease. The Division, and I quote their notice, is working on a public notice ad to announce the application window, which will be in March, and the pre-application meetings, which are tentatively planned for March 4th and 5th. That's an end quote. Let me know if you have any questions or comments that you would like relay to the Division about this A U Z.
I would like for them to, they're going to give leases. They need, people need access to get to the lease. Right about, almost now, they're having a problem, especially on this east end. Ain't got no access, no parking.
Mm-hmm.
Or nothing. So if the state, they got all that land. They need to get them people some, a boat ramp and a parking space. Because it's going to be, it's, it's causing a problem. And it's going to get big and bigger as they add more people to it.
That's right. That's a really good point. We already see that at Alligator Harbor.
Right.
We have all these agriculture leases, and it's crowding parking right onto people's residential front lawns and access to one of our ramps.
So we need to, I make a motion, we tell the state to, ask them, can they do something about the parking and the access in the park?
And it...
That, that's not the county's responsibility. I'm at the state over that. We not over.
Did you want to do a boat ramp in your motion, too?
Yeah, they need one. I meant, the one they got over there now is a, what is, that, that wood road, I meant, that dirt road, right?
It's a street.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's a street.
They need to put a boat ramp in it and pay the street.
Sure.
I guess we'll have to pay the fee, because it's kind of, but I don't know, but they, they need to put a boat ramp or something.
Commissioner Parrish, I mean, forgive me if this, the fact of my ignorance here. So do you think they will load up the Buddy War, War Boat Ramp and where the Maritime Museum is? You think they'll load it up to access, or that's still too far away, to access the...
No, that's, that's the ramp they were using.
So they're going to load up that to get to this, this lease, the four mile? Okay, that's what I thought would happen.
That's the four mile, but I'm talking about, we still got...
Yeah.
We still got a problem in the county.
Yes.
With this, this one on the east end. That's where the problem.
Yeah, Alligator Harbor, and, you know, and Commissioners, you all know, we've done, again, we've sent letters to the Board of Trustees, you know, we've sent letters to DAX, we've sent, you know, we've copied our representative, our senator, and to no avail. Not even response. We didn't get a response.
And that, that's still a good, long piece down there from where the Buddy War park at to where they, they use that on a rough date.
The four pound?
Yeah. I mean, you know, according to what side boat them people got, where they can get, they can get rough between there.
Yeah.
So they need to put one that's closer there if they got through the property.
You talk about not getting responses. It just seems appropriate to me that you should send the same letter again, second request, and just...
Okay.
Keep being persistent.
So are you seconding Commissioner Lockley's motion?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Lockley, a second by Commissioner Bolt. Any more discussion?
Just, is the motion including boat ramp infrastructure?
Yeah.
And parking?
Yep.
Okay. And you've taught me, we need a hitching post on every boat ramp for your boat, right?
Yep.
Yep. So that, that just shows you how serious we are about really getting this thing right for agriculture.
Yeah, you need a hitching post on it, because some people launch by themselves.
Yeah.
And they ain't got no way to tow it. They boat be down the river.
Yeah, you're, that happened to you once, didn't it?
Yeah, me and a whole lot of them.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's in.
My final item is 37. Commissioner Jones asked that I attach the Appalachian Regional Planning Council February 2020 board notes to my report. It's a nice format that they do it in now, easy read and easy to find information as a reference point. And Commissioner, that's all I have for y'all today.
I have one thing for you before you sit down.
Yes, sir.
I don't remember, a couple of things going through my mind today, so I don't remember the name of the street. But I know from talking to some of the county people, where you can turn off Highway 98 and go toward the old Carabelle Beach. If you go straight down to the beach, there's a turnaround area.
By McKissick?
Yeah, but it's not McKissick, though. It's the old beach area. It goes straight to the beach. It doesn't go down by anybody's house. It goes straight to the beach. It's a turnaround. It is horrible. I was told by county staff that the last time they tried to do that, some of the adjacent property owners come out and called the City of Carabelle Police, and was trying to tell them they can't touch the road, and we need to resolve that issue.
You remember that, Mr. Shuler? Oh, Attorney Shuler.
We, we need to resolve that issue, because that needs to get fixed, and it belongs to the county. The county's maintained it for 40 years. It is not somebody else's property.
Okay.
I can't make a motion, but I do have a problem with that.
You want to motion with it?
Whatever it takes. What do we need to do, sir?
Well, at this point, I would say let's direct, now, I've got the direction. I don't think you need a motion. I'll, I'll look into this matter. I'll talk with the road department. I'll come back with facts and information, make a recommendation back to the board.
Sounds good.
At the next meeting on March 3rd, and if y'all think it needs more prompt attention, go ahead and authorize me to investigate it, and then contact whoever I need to in Carabelle to move this process forward in determining, you know, if they think it's their road, why do they think that? There's been a battle with it through the city, too, I think, who owns the road. Yeah, I don't, not a lot, off the top of my head, what I remember is there's a management plan issued that was brought before this commission by the state for the management of some state lands down there between, seven or eight years ago. And the county said, "No, we're not taking on that management role." The City of Carabelle has taken on that, that management plan with the state lands. How all that interplays with the layout of the road, I, I don't know right now, but if you'll authorize me to look into it, and then if you want me to come back to the board without taking action, that's fine, or if you think I need to take action to contact the city attorney in Carabelle and say, you know, "If you think this is your road, why do you think that?", I'll be happy to do that as well. Yeah. The last time we tried to grade it, the lady got front of the grader and wouldn't move. Oh, Lord.
Yeah.
I'd say do what you got to do.
Yeah, all the above.
Do what you got to do to get people, we can straighten it out, whatever it takes to get it. That's my opinion.
I'd be good with that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll get in touch with Mr. Hartman and ask him. We'll, we'll try, I mean, he and I work together well, so.
Michael.
If you don't... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
No, you... If you will, get a time clock for the three-minute, five-minute thing.
He wants a clock, so I want to set it up here.
Their time.
You can see.
Or like they're using a legislative one with the yellow and green light, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That way, there won't be no confusion.
Okay.
Everybody knows right.
It's a good idea.
Woo, works for me.
It won't seem arbitrary. Even though it's not, it won't seem that way.
Yeah, okay. That works for me.
Put it on.
Time for public, for public comment. Commissioner, let me, Commissioner Lockley, we, we, two things talking together, because kind of sparks something in my mind. You remember you had said at one point you want to discuss if at the end of, I apologize, was it a send? And the same ramp access? Yeah. Yeah, the same one, we were just talking about Alligator Point. You want to see if Howard could do something with the end of it to help?
Yeah.
You still want to talk about that, or?
Yep. Well, we need to, because it's still our road now, right? Get the road going.
Yeah, the road is county road.
So, but what they saying, they saying it, it's not a, it's a homemade, from what I gather.
It's a street end.
It's a homemade boat ramp. It's not a, it's not a, one of them like out there waving. So they having a problem, the people told me to tuck two trucks to pull them out. It was two brothers, and they had to hook up both trucks just to get out. They say it going to be worse than that on a low tide, and I don't, it's messed up.
State, state the one that put all that pressure on that little ramp right there. They need to build a ramp down there.
Yeah.
Buy some land, build a ramp, make parking for all these people. They issued all their permits. We ain't issuing their permit down there. They did.
We tried to use the old FSU Marine Land. That didn't...
We don't even need to take that over. They need to take it over.
Yeah.
They need to provide a ramp for these people. They gave them permits, too.
Yeah, that's right.
They caused a problem.
Like Commissioner Bolt said, I'll take the letter, renew my request.
Sure.
And say, "Here we are again, still waiting, still wondering what's going on."
We're not waiting. The people's waiting.
Well, the people are waiting. That's correct.
People are waiting.
Let them know it. They done this, they caused a problem. That's they baby.
Okay.
Why don't you send it certified mail? And get a receipt.
Works for me.
And make sure the governor get a card.
I will. Certified mail. Every copy.
Get a, our representative, who, you know, they, they come down here once a year. And then the governor. That'd be a good name for him, like, you know. That boat ramp, that man to come down here and weigh your hands. But good.
Oh, I know. We, we also wrote him a letter asking for access to the old...
FSU Marine.
FSU Marine, and we haven't heard anything. And that needs to be a second request certified.
They squashed that.
They, they didn't do anything, did they?
No, because the people at Alligator Point didn't want them boats coming down through there.
Yeah, the neighbors around that area...
Trailers and boats coming down through the road.
They got with state, and they squashed that. That's why you ain't never got no response.
I see.
But it's still...
Was that people of my time?
I was going to say, no, this is, no, sorry, since you were here, that happened. Let me put it to you this way. You remember somebody, I'm going to copy somebody that stood at the podium on Friday, that some people in the public know more important people than we do?
Yes, I heard that.
Where those people made phone calls to more important people than we do.
We haven't heard any of that, did we?
They squashed it. Yes, sir.
But it's like, it's, yeah. We should let them, let them know, let the public know they know the public and the, the. So, big shot people. But you know, they the ones. They created the monster. Why drop it on us? That's they baby.
Are you pulling time out, Michael? Are you pulling time out?
No, this is, has nothing to do with, this is for Attorney Shuler. This isn't, yeah. This isn't.
Alright, so now it's on you, sir.
Guys have anything else for me?
I think, I think we've chewed that enough today, sir.
Oh, one more thing.
Now I'm good.
Alright, Commissioners. Item one on my report is a contract between, a proposed contract between the county and the Franklin County Humane Society that I've negotiated with the Humane Society President, Mr. Bud Hayes. It creates a resolution of sorts to the Lagerhead concerning public access to the gun range and the funding for the Humane Society. There's some slight tweaking that Mr. Hayes has informed me that he wants to make to this draft agreement. But he has informed me that there's nothing substantive to what I'm about to explain to you that will be changed. The agreement provides that each party would maintain their own legal position. Our legal position, of course, is that it is a public road accessing a public gun range. The Humane Society's view is that it's not a public road, that it is a private driveway and that it's not really a gun range. It's something else. The proposed agreement would leave that access along that path, road, driveway, whatever we want to call it. It would not be closed by the Humane Society, but they would reserve their right to go to a judge and see if a judge agrees with them that it's a driveway that they can close. But absent a court order, that road would stay open in the same configuration as it's shown on that map. That map, aerial, is a, an exhibit A to the proposed contract. And everyone is agreeing that that is the path, but we're not agreeing on what its legal designation is. Again, they want to call that a driveway. And as you're looking at it from the left-hand side of that square is Highway sixty-five. That bright boundary on the left-hand side of that rectangle is the boundary between the, the two acres, more or less, that the county deeded to the Franklin County Humane Society back in the eighties. And then, of course, to the right-hand side of that bright line, which is again the Humane Society property, that is the gun range. So, what this agreement will do, if the board approves it, is it will maintain the status quo in terms of the Humane Society will reserve the right to go to court and seek a court order at some point in the future. But they would not close off any public right to pass over their property to get from Highway sixty-five to the gun range. They in turn would then be, if you approve this, would be allowed to receive their funding in the ordinary course. And of course, you know, what, what the board does with, with this funding and future funding and the issue would remain to be seen based on how the facts develop. But my recommendation is approval of the agreement and authorization of the chairman's signature. If any of the proposed changes that the Humane Society proposes indicate to me that this fundamental agreement, as I've explained it to you, should be changed in any fashion, then I would come back to you for further instructions.
I make a motion, they do it with condition. And when the condition being that they get that check and go block that road again, we gonna get the second check and block it. But if they want to do right, I, I'm not, I'm not against the. I'm not against them people. But if they, I want them to be fair. They, they say we not being fair. We being fair. Let them be, everybody be fair. You know, leave the things alone. If they go into code and get a decision, go to code and get a decision. But don't go out there and block no roads and all this here and expect to use the other county, you, you, you know, all this county money. Going to the gun range is county. Going to the animal control or whatever they call it. That's county. So.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I could make a. The, the agreement is written with, with technical proficiency to preserve everyone's legal rights. As I've explained it to you, my sense of things is they're not going to court. They have no intention of going to court. We can't put that in the agreement because then they would be waiving rights that they want to preserve. And I, it is appropriate for them to, to reserve their, their legal rights, I suppose. But my sense of things is they're not going to court. What I sense is they're going to wait and, and let this progression of a potential new gun range in a different location play itself out. Once that is concluded, then they may or may not want to do something different in the future. But that's just my sense of things. They clearly have not represented that to me. I want to make that clear for the record.
Yeah. And the thing I see is the head of the, the head of these organizations, they not causing the problem. You got to follow the leaders who hear and stuff down, down the line and they just go out there and do stupid stuff. It don't make sense.
So, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Lockley, a second by Commissioner Bolt. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The second item on my report, I'm, unless the board overrules me, I'm going to pull item number two, which was the request for a fence across an unopened street end down at Alligator Point. There, there's some new developments that came to my attention yesterday that impact this request, in my opinion. And I need to look into this further and there just wasn't sufficient time between yesterday afternoon and today to do that. So, unless, unless the board wants to move forward, I'm just going to pass over that item and move on to my final action item, which concerns Bay City Work Camp. And the board's directive, I guess, a couple of meetings back, three or four meetings back, the board had a directive that the, that no county personnel and no county equipment would, while those persons are on duty, be used out at the Bay City Work Camp. I explained to you at the last meeting, I had a conversation with the sheriff. He's indicated that that's not a problem for him with one exception. He has indicated that he does want the ability to use his, his inmate work crews at the Bay City Work Camp. One thing that I did not get into with him in terms of exactly what he meant by that, and it, it may be appropriate. Maybe the board wants to table this and let me go back to the sheriff and, and get some clarification from him. Because it, it may be that he, he means he's just cutting the grass every once in a while. Or it may mean he wants crews out there doing construction work. You know, I, I don't really know what he intended by that, that comment to me. But the reason I brought this back to your attention is the board's directive, the way I view it, was no county personnel and no county equipment while they're on duty at Bay City Work Camp is, to me, a very bright line. And having inmate work crews out there while those inmate supervisor are on duty, using county equipment, would be in violation of what the board's directions are. So, I want to make sure and bring it back, get some clarification. But with this one additional, I guess, clarification I mentioned to you, which is, I never really asked the sheriff what he meant by having inmate work crews out there. So, it might be worthwhile, in the absence of any further board action, for me to go back to the sheriff and say, you know, please tell me exactly what you intend by this. But I'm seeking board direction at this time.
I, I have something I want to say on that. So, without even getting into the sheriff, work crews, working for five, for volunteer organizations or tax deductible organizations, which I think I heard you mention, not even discussing that. What I understood, the, the different things said by the different members of the board, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, is the board has expressed the whole time about this work camp that we have the land, but we don't have funding available to help do it. So, in my mind, all the discussion we've had so far about people being used as a resource at the work camp is not that we're gonna have a natural flow of people that are county employees that are now working at the work camp, and now we need to increase our sheriff's budget because we need more law officers. That's what I understood. That was the whole discussion of not, you know, using, I, I don't think it was a, a thing to prevent them from, like you had mentioned, maybe using the inmates to go cut the grass and those kinds of, those are normal functions. I think it was in, what I understood from the discussions among this board, we just didn't want to, we, we can't increase the sheriff's budget by ten people because now they have a rehab center. That's, that's what I understood. Unless I'm wrong, y'all, y'all tell me if I'm wrong. So, I'm, I'm fine with you clarifying and bringing it back to us, but I'm not the whole board.
Yes.
I make a motion for you to check, see what it says.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mastin, a second by Commissioner Bolt. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's unanimous.
Commissioners, my informational items, I provided with you or to you a, a draft of a proposed contract with the school board concerning this emergency escape road. It was drafted solely by me. I had no input either from the school board's attorney or from your engineer. So, I have delivered that initial draft to the two of them. They're looking at it. I'm sure there'll be some comment back and forth as we, you know, evolve this document, hopefully into a final form to present back to you. And then the, just an, an update that St. George Island overlay public hearing will be held on March the third. Give you an update about potential discussions with Mr. George Norman and whether or not there's a potential of him voluntarily selling a portion of his land for the intersection of Tom Roberts Road and Alligator Drive. You know, it's a real sharp turn there. We've been negotiating with him in the past. The Water District Attorney, Ron Maury, and a couple of their, I think it's their engineer and also their, their chairman have been talking with Mr. Norman. As of last night, I got a phone call after hours from Mr. Maury who said that Mr. Norman was interested in maybe selling fifteen hundred square feet as opposed to the four thousand square feet that the engineer had talked about. And I'm hoping my memory is correct on the numbers, but I know the engineer had a number greater than fifteen hundred square feet. So, before I have any further conversations with, you know, anyone like Ron Maury at the Water District or Mr. Norman or come back to this board for any authorization to negotiate, I want the engineer to tell me whether fifteen hundred square feet will or will not work from the engineering standpoint. Because if the, the amount of square footage Mr. Norman is willing to sell voluntarily is insufficient, then there's no need to come back to this board for authorization to seek an appraisal. So, that's where we are with that. And then just want to inform the board, you will have a public hearing on the ordinance prohibiting overnight parking also on your March third agenda. But that is my report to the board. Any committees have questions or requests to me?
Can y'all have anything for Attorney Shuler?
I don't, but I want, I got something I got to ask you before we get in public comment.
Okay.
Question.
I was asking you.
Y'all, um. Can I?
Yeah, what?
Oh, I like to talk to them. This family I've been talking about, about their trailer in the back, back there. And they, it's been a long time they ain't, can I hear their side of the story?
I'm fine with that, sir.
Hey, y'all. My name's Anna Creamer. Some of y'all know me and I'm nervous, so excuse me.
We're fine.
So, our, everyone knows about the fire. Everybody's well aware of it. So, June twenty-fourth, our lives changed. June twenty-fifth, our lives changed again. I had a baby the next morning. So, two years of our lives went from, it went from normalcy to crazy. And it's seems to not be getting any better. You know, we have this list of things to do to get a home, to get help. We haven't received not one lick of anything in two years as far as that fire is concerned. Everything we've done, we've done ourselves as a family. So, after doing this, another application for a home and, and another step and another step and promises and promises given and not received. I just don't know what to do. I have fourteen-year-old daughter. I have a two-year-old son and I have a one-year-old daughter who lives in a home, me and my husband, full of mold that has been treated and taken down, new wood placed. And we just discovered again that our home is once again overfilled with mold, with children. I have pictures of the whole thing over two years, the whole process, the fire itself, the damage from the fire, replacing the damage from the fire that, you know, we done on our own. And we just need help. So, I mean, my husband has a couple of things he wants to say. Like I said, I have plenty of pictures. I just, I don't know what to do anymore. I can't have my babies who stay so sick. You know, some of y'all know my daughter. She has spent most of her life in a hospital. She has had eight surgeries. She has had plenty of hospitalizations and she is, she's still fighting. I can't have my kids in that home anymore and we have nowhere to go, no help to turn to. And I guess I'm just asking you all for, for help to see what we can do next to try to get this situation squared away.
And Anna, I would like to say thank you for being here. I, I think you'll find that this, this board, we've not tried to prevent any of those actions.
Y'all have been so helpful, but tell me what my next step is, what I need to take next to do something.
We're waiting, we're waiting for Ms. Belcher to bring to us the paperwork for approval. That's really our, that's our job in this. She has to prepare the paperwork, then we do the approval process. Am I, am I telling the truth, Attorney Shuler? So, I think it's a conversation, maybe Michael, that you can have with Ms. Belcher and see about the next time she arrives. As far as I understand, and I'm not trying to overstep, that's the other thing. Let me, if I can, let me explain something. And it's not directed to you. This is just public. So, our step in all this, our, the county's thing in all this, is the state did not declare this an emergency. So, the county went and did something that we really shouldn't have done. And that's apply for funds to try to help all these residents. So, we've done all we can to secure the funding. There's a process as to go through that we can't intervene in. We can't circumvent. Maybe that's a better way to say it. So, uh, uh, give me just a second, sir. So, we're not, we've not tried to delay it. But our whole thing in this as a county, as the commission, was to get the funds, let the program be run and then we approve what's brought to us. That's, that's the way it should work. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Which according to Ms. Belcher was supposed to be placed in front of you all today.
Yeah.
She said that on my, in, in my home two weeks ago, after your meeting two weeks ago, that this meeting, she would be placing it in front of y'all, which is why I was here today to hear.
Well, I, I wasn't saying that to shut you down.
Yes, sir. No, no, sir. I understand. I've, I've talked to a couple of you all and y'all have been very helpful and we are very thankful for what y'all are trying to do.
She told me that she was gonna have it ready the next meeting and there just a few minutes ago.
Okay.
Yes, she told me she was supposed to meet with you and have her.
For the first meeting in March?
Well, she's told us that several times, sir.
Yeah.
I mean, she, she has actually told us the last two years that my kids was going.
I just talked with her.
That my kids was gonna receive a home for Christmas. She told my kids that, okay? We haven't even received nothing. We haven't received a camper. We've been standing at home ever since the fire. We didn't get a motel stay. Everybody knew that we was going to Panama City the next morning to have our child. Everybody knows how I used to be. Yes, I got a past. I've changed my ways. Been long changed my ways. And I feel like my family was neglected because of my past. That's what I feel like. And I've even got it in paperwork to prove it. Everybody else, they got a camper to stay in. They got food vouchers. They got the five thousand dollars. I mean, it says right here. That old Mr. Jimmy Patronus, he sent five thousand dollars down here for everybody that was affected by that fire.
That was, that was from the state, Devon, and you had to actually do paperwork for it and we have nothing to do with that? I mean, you know what I'm saying? That's not us.
Okay. Our county has seven hundred thousand dollars in grants that was, that was granted to us. And there was two point six million dollars that was granted on top of that. Where did that money go? How come we didn't receive just a night in a motel? That would have been fine.
All we can do is try to move it forward at this point.
Thank y'all so much.
That money is a CDBG.
There's a lack of, lack of communication going on here, not on y'all's end, but on y'all's, on someone else's end. And I strictly believe that right there because I've been told several times, you felt, you had got to fill up this application. You got to qualify for this. You got to qualify for that. I didn't have to qualify for nothing when you burnt my home. I was living perfectly fine. I had my own business. I was up and going. And then I was back in the hospital with my daughter Friday where she was dead in my arms in my front yard. And I had to give her CPR. And then they had to come back and live in that home. And it took all I can do.
You're talking to somebody that's lived through their house burning?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I know you have and that's the reason I'm expressing my feelings to you.
Tried to block that. You know what I'm saying?
I'm not saying that, Mr. Ricky. I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
Yes, no one in here has. But other people has intervened. All of y'all have helped and I thank y'all very much.
So, I would say this, and I'm just trying to summarize. I'm not trying to cut you off. Please don't think I am.
No, sir. No, sir.
There are qualifications to that grant that this board could not change.
Yes, sir.
It's because we're getting the money. It's federal money that come from HUD to the state of Florida.
Yes, sir.
We can't change the rules. Yes, I understand that. I know what it's like to, to live through a fire.
Yes, sir.
And the one I lived through, there wasn't, nobody gave us nothing.
I know.
I got twenty dollars from Caribou High School, 'cause I was playing basketball at the time. That's it. That was the end of it. There was nothing else. There was no fundraiser. There was no fish fry. There was nothing. So, I mean, that really loses validity with me, and I'm, I'm not trying to be any way. We'll do our best to try to move it forward. I think we're all aware of the situation. I'm sorry it didn't happen today, but that was not our fault. That's all I'm trying to say.
But what I'm trying to say, you're not aware of all the situation. She is not telling you everything. I've got our conversation, more of a word, wrote down everything that she asked me. She was asking me, what was I gonna do with a kitchen sink in the yard? I said, well, what do you mean? That was in the house. Why are you picking that kitchen sink? We're talking about the house that's burnt. Why are you talking about the kitchen sink? That's what I'm saying. Y'all are not aware of her stuff. She's telling y'all one thing, and y'all can ask Ms. Angela Webster, and she'll tell you the truth.
Well, don't worry. There'll be some discussions, but again, the administration and the grants, not on the commission. That's not our job here. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. And I sure appreciate everything.
Yeah, and we can't micromanage it. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be good.
I mean, why did I have to wait so long?
Sorry, I can answer that.
Has it?
No, there's other people that are still waiting.
I'm not, I am not trying to sound rude, but how come you can't answer that? You said that the county was in control of the grants and putting these places, these campers, these campers and stuff that people got to stay in? While everybody else had to stay in this little addition about the size of this right here. Yeah. And I had to make a bathroom in it, so we could take a bath in there, because the mold is so thick. If you look at these pictures on my wife's phone, y'all would, it would, it would blow y'all's mind. My home was wide open. Somebody could ride by and throw a ball, and it would've landed in my little boy's room. No tarp. Then I had Hurricane Michael blowing on top of it. It is burnt. All three of my kids are actually going to a rep store doctor right now. All three of them have asthma, and we told Ms. Ever that from the get-go. She asked, did they have asthma? We said yes. She said, okay, we gotta get y'all a place. That was two and a half years ago. Five years ago, it seems like. But it seems like it's just getting more and more stuff, more and more stuff added to the list whenever. She said, I don't need my taxes paid. Went and paid them that day. She said, I need the yard cleaned. I had it cleaned within two days. She asked me the other day, how long will it take you to have this yard cleaned if I get you a dumpster on Monday? I said, Tuesday afternoon. It'll be clean. I'm throwing everything away. So, I did. I threw my kids' swing sets away, everything away. Lawn mowers, go karts. If, if I wasn't using it every day, it went in the trash. That yard is big span. It's been that way for a week. She hasn't showed up.
We'll definitely have a discussion.
I thank y'all so much for hearing me. And all I'm doing is ask for your help. I'm not up here for a handout. I'm not up here for a handout. I want what I deserve.
Yes, sir.
That's all I want. You know?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I sure appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Ms. Devon, thank you.
Any more comments? I have one. If you don't have anything to do Thursday night, you can drive to Vernon and watch us win. We're in the Sweet Sixteen, so if we win this, we have the opportunity to host the regional final next Tuesday.
You gonna be here?
If, if we win Thursday, yep. Tuesday I'll be here. But Thursday night's in Vernon, eight o'clock.
We're in Vernon, eh? Okay.
Up above Freeport.